All the meeting to order, would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you get close? Okay.
Me too.
Okay.
And then we take us into open session.
Okay, we just need an approval of the minutes for tonight's meeting. For the agenda. Motion by Erin. And a second by Patty, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
We're going to go in two minutes.
And are we going right into the tax rate levy hearing? Dr. Wilson?
Okay, I wanted to quickly go through our tax rate hearing with you. And just have a conversation on what we would like to recommend for approval. If you go to, there you go, that slide. You can quickly see that we have grown in our assessed valuation. It did increase by 59 million, almost 60 million, from 2023 to 2024. I will remind you that this is statutory. I'm trying to say, this is what we're supposed to do statutorily because the tax rate is required to be set by September 1st of each year. And the process followed to calculate the tax rates is provided by the state auditor's office using data provided by Green County. Oh, that's not Green County, sorry. That's Christian County, my fault, sorry about that. The levy, if you notice in 2023, it was 414, and this year it's also 414. The operating last year was at $3 and rounded up to 19 cents, and the debt service was .9547. This year, we're recommending that the operating be 3.1838 and that the debt service is .9562. If you go to the next, the assessed valuation, that's a little harder to see. But you can see where the assessed valuation has grown and what our tax rate has been since 1997. You can see that for some amount of years, there were huge tax rate increases, or excuse me, assessed valuation increases. And then you also have some years where there wasn't. You can see in 2000, we go down to 2021, 22. There was an increase at 11.75%. Last year at 6.67, and this year at 9.71. Now, these numbers are continually updating, so if you were to go out to Desi and various places, you would find, because they're constantly turning this information in. So the assessed valuation at this timeframe may be $676 million. But if you go out in two months, it may actually go down by a million dollars. So it's always, or up, it's just always sort of in flux. But you will notice that since 2003, the tax rate has stayed the same as at 414. Okay, the next. So I just, we wanted to show you a peer district levy comparison to where we're at. Now, this does not give the entire picture of where the districts are at because I do not have their assessed valuation on here. So remember, everything's based on assessed valuation. So Branson, for example, their total levy is 4.0936, and they have an enrollment of 4,454. But as everyone knows, their assessed valuation will be quite higher than what the rest of ours would be. Nixa, at this point, is at $4.51 for their tax levy. And notice they have an operating of 3.44 and a debt service of $1.07. You can see where we're at, at Ozark. Republic is at, operating at 3.1, debt service of .94, and they also have 8 cents that goes into capital. For a total of 4.1254. Willard is at an operating of 2.85 and a debt service of 1.27 for an operating of 4.12. And then Rogersville is at 3.47, debt service of .9394, and for a total of 4.41. So this is just information that I've been asking. You can also look at where our enrollment is as compared to where our debt service and our capital and our total tax levy is. So I am asking that you approve, let me go back, that we set our total tax levy at 414, operating at 3.1838, and debt service at .9562.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for Dr. Wilson, or should we go into public comment next for the sign up?
Want to look at the agenda?
Yes. Okay, we have public comment next, and I believe we have two people signed up. And? Yes. Julia Curran, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Julia Curran, and I have lived in the Ozark community with my husband for over 20 years. And our children are graduates of the Ozark school system. My purpose in speaking this evening is to comment on the agenda regarding the tax rate levy. First, I'd like to thank the school board for their commitment to the Ozark school system, our students, and taxpayers. I'm concerned because I've heard recent complaint from a group in Ozark. This group, Ozark Schools Team Support, held a town meeting last, a couple of, well, last week. It was on August 17th. This group believes that the taxes in Ozark are too high and need to be lowered. And they also advocate for our board to end their membership with the Missouri School Board Association and support to, when they quit the School Board Association, to develop their own local policies and regarding the school system itself. There is a direct connection between property and community value and an excellent school system. When people choose a place for people to live or buy homes, the school system, community system, community services really weigh very heavily in that decision on where people live and buy property. The quality of life of students can be directly affected by the value of the education experience that they receive. And cutting taxes and programs often result in cutting programs like sports, clubs, schools, school nurses, band. And the loss of these programs not only harms students, but they also create a decrease in the value of the school system and thus the value of the community. And as it was just noted, that Ozark's tax rate has not changed in 20 years, but the growth of Ozark has. And the school system has grown and accommodated that huge growth in Ozark. The Missouri School Board Association, as you all know, is a private nonprofit organization whose mission is, statement is, helping school boards ensure all students succeed. Individual boards of education in Missouri join this at a fee. And in return, the Missouri Association of School Boards provides training, policy support, legal assistance to member school districts. And they're also represented on their school board by different school board members, members that we elect. So it's not this obscure group that has no interest in what Ozark has to say or our surrounding communities. I support our board and the direction that you've brought our community schools so far in my 20 years of being here in Ozark and putting four students through it and knowing the community well. But too often, as citizens, we don't pay attention to local politics like school boards. And I come before you concerned that this group, Ozark School Support Team, and others are making their agendas, personally known, may not have all the accurate information that they need to put forth these very big changes that they want. And I hope that they seek factual information from you, the school board, and our administrators, and that they voice their concerns to you generally, to the board, and hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. And next we have Samantha Burton.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for being here. I am a parent in the school district. I have kids in the junior high and the middle school. And I'm also here to speak about the tax levy. I support what the previous speaker had to say, so I don't want to take up too much of your time. Really quickly, I think that it can be summed up in a couple sentences. An investment in schools is an investment in our future and in our community's future. The current students today will be your neighbors tomorrow, and what kind of neighbors do we wish to have? I appreciate that the school board and the school district has kept the current tax rate for two decades and has done quite well with it. And I would encourage, in the future, we may want to visit raising this to stay competitive in our growing district. So thank you all for what you do. And again, an investment in education and our schools is an investment in our future and our community.
Thank you, Samantha. All right, and next is? That's it for the tax, thank you, okay. 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 Yes. Okay, well, next we need to set the tax rate levy, all right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations to set the general operating levy at 3.1853 and the debt service. Hey, if you'll look at this slide, look at that slide. But it says recommended operating.
On there, they accidentally put last year's numbers. They're supposed to be different.
But the recommended is 3.1838.
Yes, yep, that's it.
You said 3.1853.
Okay, anyway. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations to set the grand general operating levy at 3.1838 and the debt service levy at .9562, for a total of 4.14 for the 2023-24 school.
Okay, motion by Patty. Do I hear her? Second?
Second.
Second by Erin. All in favor?
I'd like to make, Madam President, discussion. I'd like to make a statement about the, about that. I asked for some various scenarios of projected revenue with varying levy rates. This, two weeks ago, wrote and asked for those different scenarios of what the projected revenue income increase would be. Because I'm concerned about the ethics of what was suggested at last month's preliminary hearing where there was a presentation about the different numbers and amounts and what has been practiced in the past. As was noted during the June presentation about, oh, sorry, the July presentation about the tax levies, there's a legal cap on the amount of increase in revenue the district may receive legally in the state law. Not greater than, and it says, not greater than the lower of the CPI or 5%. You might remember in July, Mr. Kinder even remarked on the surprising fact that the CPI was even the higher option over the 5%. But this year, it's 5%. We're not supposed to increase more than 5%. Note that the cap on the increase still allows there to be an increase. We are getting more money this year than last year. It just prevents that increase from being too much. According to the law, if the projected increase in revenue exceeds that cap, school districts are required to reduce their levies, so the increase in revenue will not be as high. The community has observed with great disapproval the past practice of the district, a practice which motivated a repeat recommendation in the presented numbers again last month, of quietly raising the levy rate in the debt service fund so as to offset the required weight drop in the incidental fund, thus skirting the law's requirement to actually lower the taxpayer's burdens when the increase is so great. But isn't that money in the debt service fund needed to be used to pay down debt? Perhaps that might make that maneuver of money more excusable to some. But it's not actually used for that. The observed practice of the district has been to then ask voters to move the money the following year back to the incidental fund so we can spend it on general needs. Thus technically avoiding the requirements of the law by temporarily hiding it in another fund rather than actually lowering the levy as required. Or even using it to pay down some of the district's astronomical debt of $86.27 million. Does it make that much difference to the average homeowner's bill? No, probably less than $5. Is it going to cost the district a lot of money? No, only about $10,000 less of an increase would we be getting. So instead of receiving $21,465,000 in funds, we could expect $21,455,000. This is, that's less of a reduction in amount of increase than the district pays in annual fees to just one of those professional organizations that somebody mentioned. But the amount isn't what matters. It's not how much the homeowner saves or how much it costs. What matters is our ethical responsibility to obey the law. This money belongs to the taxpayers, and we are stewarding it according to the law. If we are required to lower the levy to give the taxpayers back $1 or $100, then that is what we should do. So if we lowered the incidental fund levy to the needed value, where it was supposed to be to meet the legal requirement to cap that increase to be not more than 5%, and we did it without raising the debt service levy, then I could go along with it. If we don't, as it is, if we do what we've decided that we, what we just made a motion to go do, I cannot agree with that. And if we take a vote, then I'm going to ask that my no vote, my no vote, the reason for my no vote be recorded in the minutes. And I'll submit my written reason to the board secretary.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, call. Is there, is there any question that this is an illegal amount to be? We've asked, you sent the email to us, and we appreciate that, and Joe Kinder answered in the email.
I said it's technically not illegal, but it is deceitful and dishonest.
So? Are you all ready to vote? Amber or Mark?
Just a question, is this a general practice for most school districts to do this?
Yes, it is.
Of the school districts in the county, the last time, there was a reassessment time, and they were required to lower their levy rates, all of them did, except for two. Ozark and one other, maybe, maybe it was four. But all of the rest of them actually lowered their levy like they were supposed to. A couple of districts did that little trade the money to a different fund for a year trick, which voters know about. The county treasurer has mentioned, I mean, voters know about it, and they don't like it, and that's not right. And this year, it's such a small amount, it's $10,000. I mean, that's a lot of money to us, but I mean individually, but for the school district, because I haven't heard anything. And that's not like we're cutting money. That is not as much of an increase as we would have gotten. We're still getting an increase.
And did the voters vote for this transfer in levy rate? Last year? Yes. 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 So, the patrons have spoken, they voted for this levy transfer. Any other comments?
It's .0015%, yeah. It's 15, it's 1 and 1/2 cents on a, yeah, $100,000.
Yes. Okay. All right, I'll call for a vote now. All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, nay, I'm opposed.
One opposed. Motion passes, thank you. We will adjourn the tax rate hearing and convene the open session. Which we're already in, so we will move on to request of district patrons. Siggy Hill?
School board, I have a question.
Talking to the mic, could you talk into the mic?
Oh, sorry about that. Line item 6371, dues and memberships, is listed as $63,460.42 on page 30 of the secretary's report. What does that contain?
It contains numerous things. It has...
Can you specify that?
Well, not with it not sitting in front of me, because I had, it is a combination of many accounts, such as Misha dues for all of our students, such as an MSBA due, such as dues for our professional organizations. There's quite a few that go in there.
We would like to have a specification for that. And also in our budget committee meeting in January, it was actually listed as $83,000. So I realize that there is a reduction there, but I would like to have an itemization of that.
If you will send an email as a sunshine request, we'll get that to you.
I will do that. And also, I wanted to bring something to your attention as stewards of the taxpayer's money. Last year, last month's meeting, you had Stiefel presenting to us what you're going to do with the excess money to invest it into the money market to make money. Do you actually realize that this is taxpayer's money? That you are reinvesting, instead of returning it to the taxpayer, you are reinvesting it to making money? In my eyes, that's shameful. And I oppose that. So I just want to bring this to your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have recognitions. And do we have any recognitions this evening?
Good evening. On May 17th, 2023, Ozark East Elementary Principal Karen Capen and Ozark School Resource Officer John Wilkerson helped save the life of an Ozark parent. Karen Capen, who then served as assistant principal at East Elementary, notified the school resource officer after multiple failed attempts to reach a parent, which she found very concerning. School Resource Officer John Wilkerson responded to the home where he discovered the parent not breathing. He placed the parent in a rescue position until they began breathing. Wilkerson then stayed on the scene until EMS arrived. This just shows you how much our staff not only care, but pay attention to the little details. Our staff cares deeply about students and Mrs. Capen's connection with East families helped save a life. Our officers are always ready to respond, even if it, even if it may be on our campuses. Undoubtedly, without the action of these two school employees, the parent may not have survived. Today, we would like to present Karen Capen and John Wilkerson with the School Hero Award for their exceptional and courageous lifesaving actions. John and Karen, would you come forward?
Thank you.
Yes, let's all go have a picture. Thank you for that. Guess we can do instructional update next. Okay, we'll just move on to informational items, and we have the, oh, here she comes, yeah. Congratulating the SROs, yeah, thank you for making that apart. Yeah, thank you for making that a part of the agenda. All right, we'll move on to informational items, the twenty twenty-three instructional update.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Dr. Carson.
Yes, ma'am. So, thank you. Before we jump into the instructional program update, I do want to give you just an update on enrollment count for right now. Now, we still have students who are coming, if they haven't been here for a few days, then we're calling, we're checking on them, we're asking them if they're coming back. So we still have people to take off the list, but just so you currently know, we are at, at a full district. We are at six thousand one hundred and seventeen. That's high, so we know that number's going to go down. Yesterday, yesterday, we were at sixty-one eighty, so we lost about sixty today. So we'll continue to whittle those numbers down. But from last year's September enrollment to this year, that's a hundred and seventy-two headcount. We're not talking about full-time equivalency. We're just talking headcount. You're at about a hundred and seventy-two plus. I'm assuming, Dr. Wilson and Dr. Chessick and I, we assume that that's going to drop another thirty or forty kids, maybe more. You just don't know because you're in that funny, but we're in that funny spot of counting. But right now, we're at sixty-one seventeen. Our, our largest elementary being West Elementary, and the junior high looks like it's going to top a thousand this year. And so just an update on that. Okay, for our instructional program report, I want to go through a few things, just like we did last August, I want to just catch you up on a few things. So when we're looking at our, the way we measure students, we have multiple measures. We look at local assessments, we look at state assessments, we look at Missouri Constitution, U.S. Constitution. There's a lot of ways we assess students. We also have something called interim assessments, which are the evaluate test we give from grades two to grade eight, which gives us a understanding of where students are on specific standards based on our priority standards. So the purposes of that is we want to make sure, no matter where a student goes to school, if they're at east or north or west or south, wherever they are, or whichever pod they're in, if they're in Europe versus North Africa, you want to make sure that they have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. No matter where a student is, they're going to get the same kind of education. And so we use assessments to make sure that students are being taught the same thing throughout the curriculum. And so I want to share just the state assessments with you. You'll notice this says raw data or not accountability data. That simply means that this is not what we'll find on the annual performance report. When we get that from the state, there will be different stu-, they, students count differently. So for instance, for the state, if you're in the, if you're in the country less than a year, then those students do not count for federal accountability. So that's one set of numbers. This is raw. This is not that. If students are in country for less than three years, the state legislature said they don't count for state accountability. So actually, there's three sets of numbers right there. So I'm just giving you pure raw data for today. It will be manipulated based on the rules of the feds and the state legislature and all of that. So we'll talk about that when APR happens. I just want to give you the numbers because we're about to give them to parents so they can see them as well. So our assumptions this year was whenever you move a great number of, whenever you adjust a great number of things in the school district, you can assume it's going to impact you negatively the first year it happens. And so we moved, our K's fives went to K fours, our six, seven went to a five, six, our eight, nine went to a seven, eight, and then our ten, twelve went to nine, twelve. So we moved every single area in the district. We had movement. So we assumed that it's going to impact us negatively. We did our best to mitigate that. And so we, but that was the assumption going in. We're going to try our best for it not to hurt us. And thankfully, it did not hurt us very badly, and we'll see that. Actually, the majority of what you're going to see tonight, we grew all across the district in our student achievement, and we're very, very grateful for that. And there's a lot to celebrate, and we've been celebrating with our teachers. And so I'll share those with you. Where we found the most impact was at the high school grade levels, and we added a whole new grade to the high school and a whole new building and a lot of transitions. So I am going to, I believe that the changes we've made and how we've changed some of the things for this year, and we're following our comprehensive school improvement plan, as we do that, then you're going to see those numbers go back up. But you will see that they did fall a little bit this year. So here we have English Language Arts, and what you see is year twenty-two to twenty-three, everywhere you see green is we went up in that grade level, and everywhere where it has the yellow, we didn't move, actually. It was the same. But if you'll notice from seventh grade, the cohort group was forty-seven, seventy-nine proficient advanced. Here, they went up to fifty-four, seven. So we celebrate that the cohort actually moved up. So from going to grade seven to grade eight. But if you just look across, which are two different sets of kids, this set and this set, it stayed the same. So there was no, no change there. So we celebrate in ELA, we want to see all of these greater. And thankfully, when you look at our scores, when you look at the next layer down, so those students who have a basic understanding of grade level, the majority of our students, if they're not found here or found in the basic, what we don't have, what we consider a grade level behind are those students who are below basic. And I didn't flash those numbers up, but below basic, we have very few below basic students, which we're very grateful for. And we have plans for those students. They are on at-risk plans and they're in other kinds of ways to help them grow. But when you look at just these ELA scores, you will notice that we had a really great year. Our teachers did a, just a terrific job, and we're grateful for the movement they made. If you look at math, we had a lot of great movement as well. Fourth grade, you'll notice we went down in fourth grade, and you'll notice we went up in our cohort. So we're grateful we did move up, but we did go down. And then fifth, sixth, and seventh, you'll see there. Eighth grade, this was the highest eighth grade score we've had in multiple years, even before COVID. And you, if you remember, the reason eighth grade typically looks less than all the rest is because in eighth grade, we take all those math students who are fond of math and who do well at math, and we give them the opportunity to take Algebra One ahead. And then, so what you have left, that eighth grade math score there, are those students who A, don't want to accelerate into Algebra early, or B, they're kind of, they're not very math-friendly, and they're not crazy about math. They, they struggle. Some of them are strugglers. So that's why math across the state, that eighth grade math score is really, really low. Actually, I think the state average for eighth grade math is in the thirty-something percentile. We, so we did drop this year, and we'll continue to look at that, but you'll see when we're talking about, oh, there's science. I'll come back to Algebra. But you'll see science, we had a great growth at grade five, and we stayed basically the same at grade eight. And those are not yearly tests, those are grade five covers grades three through five. It's a grade span test. Grade eight covers grade six through eight. So those are grade span, not just specific grades. And so you'll notice those. So if you look, remember the eighth grade score went down. If you'll look in the eighth Algebra One, all of those scores saw growth. And overall, that is, that's, we celebrate that with our students. Do we want more than that? Yes, but we celebrate the growth that we have, and we think what we're doing in our everyday instructional plan is helping us grow. If you look at Algebra Two, that score fell a little bit. I think that's just, that's just a matter of the individual flexibility of year to year and the changes we were going at the high school. Those students that take Algebra Two are the students who in eighth grade took Algebra One. And so they have to have a math score at the high school level, and so they can't, they're not, we don't give a geometry. And so their first available EOC score they can have is Algebra Two. And so eighty-seven point eighteen percent scored, proficient advanced. We bump between, one year we had ninety-six, and next year we have eighty-seven, then we have ninety-three. It just bumps. It, it really is a, it's just yearly fluctuation. It's not really a score that, we don't make tons of instructional decisions off the Algebra Two score, because it is typically students who are already math-friendly, or they have a proclivity towards math. And so it depends on the day and who, it's just a year-to-year bump on that. So it did go down a little bit. If you look at biology and English Two and government, they all went down this year. And again, I take that as a part of the new normal of trying to go between two buildings and trying to figure out the transitions and trying to get it all fixed in. Things we've done at the high school this year that you will notice, and as part of our school improvement, is we now went from an eighty-six minute class to a hundred-minute class. Because with the transitions, there was some loss in instructional time, and potentially these are reflecting that loss. Or it could just be reflecting all the change. We're not one hundred percent sure. So now we have fourteen minutes per block added to each class. So they're also doing some work in RTI and some flexible grouping that I think is also going to impact those scores. So I do believe these scores will go up this following year. So next steps for that, for MAP and EOC, or just all of our improvement are, we'll continue our continuous improvement plans. We'll follow our CSIP, we'll follow our building school improvement plans, and we are going to have the waiver. And so that's going to change some of the accountability piece. I'll explain it just a little bit. But if you look at, when you approved our school, Conference of School Improvement plans, the things you improved were that we're looking at each child and that we do data around each child because we don't want them to fall behind. We look at priority standards of all the things that Desi says a fourth grader needs to know. Then we look at, well, what's the very most important pieces of those? And those, we decide locally, and then we decide, so we're going to make sure students get that important chunk. And so we prioritize what we're teaching to make sure students grow and that we can hold students, we try to look at each standard with each student. And so we'll continue that work. We're working on our core and tier one instruction. I'll explain how, what we did this past week in that regard. And then our response to intervention are, when a student doesn't get it, what do we do? And we answer that looking at tiers two, three, and four, and what are the kinds of supports we put in so we can ensure that students understand and students can move on to the next grade level with understanding. Then the waiver is going to mean that we're going to use some local and interim assessment, and I'll explain that in just a second. All right, before I move to this, any questions just about MAP scores? There's like four parts to this report, so part A, questions about part A. Keep thinking, because you can come back to questions. I'll, I'll give you three more chances. Okay, so, and you're the boss, so you can interrupt me at any time. So if you look at our five-year improvement journey, in twenty eighteen, we created this instructional cycle, which is really about how are we going to operate in PLC teams? Some of our Singleton teachers, CTE teachers, other teachers don't get to operate in teams because there's maybe one or two of them. But every, all of our grade level teams, and we try to use this instructional cycle all the way around. In twenty nineteen, we started looking at our professional learning communities and how teachers work, because it'd been ten years since we really looked at that work. And then we started our Portrait of a Grad work that same year. Somewhere in the middle of that year, we had a global pandemic, which put a screeching halt on all of that work, and we were just about taking care of kids. And after, after we worked through the pandemic, then we picked those pieces back up and we started moving forward. The following year, then in twenty twenty-one, we looked at response to intervention, which are those four PLC questions. So what do we do when students get it? How can we push them even further? What do we do when students don't get it? How do we raise them up? And so that's that response to intervention piece. And as we were doing it, we realized we've got to have better assessment literacy to understand how you write assessments, how can you gather the evidence of student learning. And so last year, we had teams all over the district, from every grade level and every building, working on assessment literacy. This year, we're going to that core, and we're learning and rethinking and just working on our foundation of what do we do in core instruction? And that's where we're looking at relationships and engagement. And so last week, we had Wes Kishnik with us, and Wes Kishnik looked at engagement and how we engage kids cognitively and how we engage kids in relationships. And it was a phenomenal day. I have had multiple, just scores of teachers come to me as we're walking through the district and say, this is some of the best professional development I've had in my teaching career. It was just a phenomenal, it was only three hours, but it was very, very impactful. And he went through the Atlas model, and so we are using this Atlas model because none of this is actually new to teachers. It was a great reminder of what's really important in the classroom. And it was great for all of us to hear, we're going to use his book, and that teachers can do a book study at this first part of the year if they choose to. And so we have teachers signing up throughout the district, and then they'll work into a book study. And so to be professional development for them, just to reinforce what we heard. Phenomenal work by him. I, I just was really, really impressed with what he had to say. And the great thing is it's not adding something new to our plates. This is actually work that we, it's just a great reminder for us to do. And the fun thing is, over the last two days, all three of us have tried to be in classrooms in every building, and I think between the three of us, we've hit every single classroom in the district in the last three, two days. And what I'm already seeing is I'm seeing some of the exact same things he was talking about, teachers already doing, which is a celebration. And as I, as I say, hey, I love what y'all saw in your class, and like, yeah, did you see I was? And they talked to me about Wes's stuff and how they're applying it already. So that's just a huge celebration, and we're grateful. And I think when you engage, well, not I think, research shows, when you engage kids on a relationship level and you engage and cognitively engage them, then achievement will go up. And so I think we've got the right foundation pieces, so I'm very excited about that. So just so, all right, any que-, that's, that's point two. Any questions about that or anything you heard from teachers or anything? All right, point three, curriculum process. So just to remind you of the curriculum process we use in the district, we look at the Missouri Learning Standards and the prior, we prioritize those, and then we come up with proficiency scales, which means if, so what do kids need to do to show us evidence of that? Once we do that, we develop units of study, and that's all across the district. Most teachers do that in teams. If you're a Singleton teacher, you would do that by yourself. Hopefully, you're working with a, other groups of teachers and you're working with your administrators. Then after we've written our curriculum, so that's all local, right? So after we've made those local decisions, we ask ourselves, what are the curricular materials we need to either purchase or create? Again, locally, we make those choices. Again, locally, we make those choices. Then we purchase or we create those instructional materials to match our units of study, which are based on what we've chosen as our priority standards, all local cho, choices. That leads us to the teaching of those units of studies using best practice teaching. The best practice that Wes was going, was the great reminders. He was reminding us of what our best practice is in our teaching. Once we teach those, then we are in that instructional cycle and we have to say, where do kids not get it? How can we make sure they do? Where do kids get it? How can we push them further? And those, it's a cycle that we continue to go. And so every year we do this cycle. We may not make wholesale changes. We may make little changes based on what we know about our learners in front of us. And so that's just the curriculum process. In that process, we buy textbooks or we create some of our own instructional materials. And so let's talk about how we choose those kinds of textbooks. We have a district curriculum council. And it's involved with representatives from every building in our district, grade level PK twelve, administrators from our district. There's also community members on that, uh, on that council. And so we have parents as well and some business leaders. So we try to keep that a pretty broad council. So it represents our whole community. As we do that, we have three to five meetings a year. We bring, uh, uh, we bring textbooks to them after we've looked through them. We'll ask for a recommendation by the curriculum council to approve them. We'll talk through anything that we might see as a problem with the textbooks. We've absolutely said no to textbooks in that process. We've said, nope, go back to the board, find a different textbook. We don't think this represents our community like it should. Or we think it's blah, 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 X, Y, Z. So this council really helps us as we're combing through our materials. They don't work on what's tomorrow's worksheet for third grade. They work on the larger pieces of those things we're going to buy and adopt for some of the texts that we use. And so they also look at curricular materials. They look at new courses that we're recommending. They're not the final approval. The final approval process goes, their recommendations goes to administrators. And then at the, uh, once a year, you all actually look at those same lists. And that was in the June, uh, board meeting. You, that was all in, it was a pretty large packet that you had in your June board meeting. So for text approvals, teachers use Missouri Learning Standards to guide their selection of textbooks or source materials. Then they turn the request in to us. The district curriculum council made up of all those community members works through that. And then we recommend it based on, uh, our budget and based on if it fits the priority standards of the district. And then the board approves that at the end of the year, and I've explained that. So with that, the library also, librarians also order text every year. And when librarians order, we call them tech librarians because they also work as our tech support for a building. When they order books, they're looking at student interest and curricular connections. And so they use guidance from their professional organizations, blogs, uh, library journal. Fallet Resources is who handles all of our ordering. They look at multiple things to figure out what books they want to buy. And then they go to Common Sense Media and they also look on that to see if, what those selections are. Once they order those books in, they take the books to what we call reading labs. And that's a library advisory board. And those reading labs are made up of teachers and grandparents and some parents. It's typically not outside of the group that's in a building. So if, if, um, if Patty, your grandson was in a building and you wanted to be on that lab, then you absolutely could serve on that. I serve on every one of them. Not that I like to read children's literature, but it's a lot of work. And so from the time we start ordering library text, we'll have teachers, a hundred people, reading continually, trying to make sure that what we read fits what we want as a school district and fits what's good for kids. And so as we do that, they make recommendations. And if what we decide is, is the book going to be a keeper? It's good for kids? Or maybe, let's say a fifth grade librarian ordered a text. And when their committee reads it, they're like, ah, it's a good text, but it's really an older kid's text. It's not for fifth and sixth grade here in Ozark. And so they'll pass that book to the junior high or the high school. And they'll read it and they'll decide, is it work for junior high or high school? Or that fifth grade teacher, that fifth grade committee may read it and they say, that's just not a text for us, period. They want to read that, let them go to the public library, let them go somewhere. We just don't think we're going to handle that because it just doesn't fit us. So we discard the book. We get rid of it. It never makes it to the library shelf. There is a third choice. And the third choice is, you know, this is a text that's highly recommended. It's, um, it may have mature themes that a fifth and sixth grader, there may be a lot, let's say it's a book on the Holocaust and there's just a lot of gruesome. There's a lot of things about it that just, I may not want my fifth grade son or daughter to read it. But there may be another parent that says, you know, I've got a really mature fifth and sixth grader and they can handle mature themes. And when every student is enrolled every year, parents have the choice to either click, my kid can read mature themes from the library, or click, nope, no mature themes for my kid. So every parent has that choice. So if I brought this book on the Holocaust to the librarian and they said, uh, you know, this is, uh, they look, you know, you can't check this one out. You're welcome to have your parent come in. We can look at it together and they can choose, help you choose. But based on what your parents chose or they can't do that. We don't have tons of books that are actually on that list, but we have the option. And every parent opts in or out of that option. So it's just, it's something we've only done for the last few years. So there's not a long list of those texts. Typically, if we think, eh, we're not sure, we just get rid of it just because it's better, uh, causes less of everything. So if a parent or a student or a teacher comes across a book that they're like, I just don't know if this is a great text or not, then they can go to the website, fill out this form, and it pushes that book, no matter if we've had it for twenty years. It pushes that book into the review cycle. And we go through it as if it were a brand new book again. At the end, we may determine, man, that book has a lot of worth and we keep it. Or at the end, we may say, eh, that parent or that kid or that teacher is absolutely right. Let's get rid of that one. But we have reasons for that. We're, we're following our process. But any one of any level can fill out that form and have us reconsider the text. Maybe that's not a good text for us. So that textbook approval process is, is a process that we use for textbooks. The librarians is almost the exact same process. If there is a text that some people say, this is, ah, we're just on the fence. Then the library text will go to our district curriculum council and they'll all read it. And we'll debate it and then we'll choose what we're going to do. And we've had some really lively debates. Most years we don't because we try to, yeah, we prefer not to. But we've had some pretty lively debates on, is this book a keeper or not? What we try not to do, once you're, the book goes onto the shelf, then the book gets its own First Amendment rights, believe it or not. So for me to pull a text is much, 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 much harder than for that text never to hit the bookshelf to begin with. So we work tirelessly to keep the right materials in front of our kids that match our priority standards, that match our curriculum and match our community standards. And we work tirelessly on that. And so every year I pledge to you, and I'll pledge to you again this year, that we will work equally as hard to make sure that happens and that we keep our kids safe like we want them and that they learn good things and they read good text materials. All right, that's my next stopping place. I only have one more stopping place. I told her this one was long. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll talk fast.
Well, this is important stuff. I appreciate you bringing this to us and presenting this. And I just, I really appreciate over the past eleven years, the painstaking job you've done bringing the community in on this. And they've been a part of this process and all of the books that you have read personally.
It is my whole team. I thank you for that, but it's my whole team. It's not I. It's everybody.
You and your team, yes. And thank you so much.
Any other questions or thoughts? Last bit, we were, the board approved the innovation waiver. And with the approval of the innovation waiver, what that means for us is we may take MAP again. But what, they don't know that part yet. So we haven't been given the opportunity to get waived from the federal requirements of MAP. But what we're waived from is the MAP scores won't determine our APR. What will determine our APR is our local assessments that we are using. So we will look at our interim assessments and other local data to show what students are doing and how students are doing. That will determine our APR score. Lot of things still in the unknown. There's only twenty districts in the state who chose to go this route. And we have been amongst the twenty. And we are excited to move forward with that. And we believe this is actually the direction the state needs to go because it emphasizes local control and it emphasizes, uh, it really shows how students grow within a year. We believe this is where Ozark needs to be. We believe this is where the whole state needs to be. The state will, we hope we're the tail that's going to wag the dog eventually and they'll get there. But for those twenty districts, we're excited to be named among them. And what we are also valuing this is market value assets, which means we're going to really work with our students on work experiences, college credit, IRCs, and entrepreneurial experiences as a part of what's it mean to be work ready? What's it mean to be career ready? What's it mean to be ready for the next thing? And if you think, well, that sounds a lot like diploma and, then you are correct. And thankfully, we've served on this committee from the very beginning. And so our diploma and piece really helped push that. We've got growing room in every one of those categories. But we're in the right spot and we're doing what's best for kids. And we need to keep moving forward in that regard. And so I think the way our academies and the pathways play into our diploma and will be very beneficial for our kids, number one, that's the important piece. It'll also help with our, uh, uh, next APR, whatever that looks like. Because they don't have that defined yet. But we were granted the waiver, so we're excited about the changes in that. It just simply means all the things that we've been doing, we continue doing them. The thing we're not going to do is have a, uh, we're not going to have to teach to a test of some type. We will just continue to work on the things that we've been working on. We continue to take EOCs and we'll take the science grades five and eight. So that has not changed. Those will be a part of our APR on some level. We're not sure what that looks like. So fourth stop, questions?
Any questions? Thank you. No questions.
Okay, thank you. I typically don't talk this long, so I'm sorry and thank you.
Thank you. This is great. This was wonderful information. Yep, and we have construction update. Dr. Chesick.
I do normally talk that long, so get ready. No, as I'm, as I'm getting the mouse so that I can control that, so I'll scroll through it. I'll take speaker's privilege and I just want to thank everybody for first two great days of school. Uh, and that goes across the board. There's three things that you want to do in the first week of school. Give them school, feed them, get them home. That last one is the hardest. And last year, and I'm, and I'm trying to remember, I think Kent, Dr. Sappington was the one I went to with this. After years and years of an hour, extra hour of dropping kids off, we all sat down after that first day and said, how can we make this better? And we took notes and we put them in a folder. And I went to Dr. Sappington a year later, it was already there. We pulled it out and we made those changes. Along with a hundred and twenty-two degree day that helped us motivate people to get kids on the bus. We did not do an hour extra, which we communicated to everybody. It could take up to an hour over their normal time to get them home. Yesterday, we were about twenty-five minutes with the kids. That doesn't count the buses that broke down because of the excess of heat. And then today, other than a wreck outside of, uh, on NN, we would have been done. Our last bus would have dropped off about five oh five, five oh seven, which is an amazing first two days of school. So I want to thank the Transportation Department and Dr. Sappington and, and, uh, Mr. Chambers's team for making sure that we did an amazing job in getting those kids home. So speaker privilege over. Construction update. If you haven't heard, and you have, because we've talked about this for several months. And last month, we, you passed the fix. Uh, and the fix is to replace the high school HVAC system. That place is in process. The equipment is being ordered. Again, those are ginormous units that will take more than ten months to get here. But the work is beginning. The control replacement is beginning. The parts being ordered. We have stuff to do from now to then. So what does that mean for our kids sitting in classrooms at the high school? From starting on yesterday morning, uh, before the first bus even rolled, we were talking and about monitoring the high school system. And actually it wasn't the high school system. I asked everybody to look. This is a screenshot from our current control system that controls several of our buildings, not all of them. And I said, hey, I want to know every building where we're at. And they went in and their, every building was up and running. The one building that we can't remote into, that we will with the fix that you guys passed, was actually down, which was West Elementary. And they went and restarted it. The temperature was not bad. It just actually, just the entire system wasn't on. So they went and started it. West had no hiccup, has not hiccup since then. The high school is the one that we, we know is an issue. And with that said, we have, when I say we, Mitch Maples is the one that was on the roof most of the day today, um, working diligently and, and working hard. So Mitch is doing a great job along with Mark Faught and Cody Gann and the entire maintenance crew, keeping these things running as well as every unit. Our supplier at the high school, we like to see those numbers about fifty-five degrees. So we have three current units. So on a hundred and, today was not quite a hundred and twenty-two. I think by it said and done, we're not going to hit yesterday's high, but it was hot. This was taken at one forty-nine, right before we started doing buses. And I brought this up, uh, I don't need to log back in, but we're better than this now. We're just a few degrees cooler in all of these categories, so we're cooling air faster. So in multi-zone two, we're doing good. In multi-zone three, we're doing good. We have some sub. We're down to forty-four in some air. So there are areas, most of our areas are getting air to the degree which is supposed to be cool. The big unit, the one that does, obviously if you look at this, you can see that does more zones. This is the bigger unit. This is the one that we are, that we always struggle with. Is still, it's not at fifty-five. It looks probably, if you were to average those out, it looks to be like sixty-seven degrees. So it's above average, but that's still better than the hundred degrees. So that's the air that's blowing into the classroom. We are blowing air into the classroom that's cooler than the outside air. I pulled this one up because this is the worst classroom. And I'm be fair, there is one classroom that read ninety degrees. I went and looked at that. It was ninety degrees and it was seventy-nine degrees on one side and seventy-nine degrees on the other. I went into that classroom, talked with the teacher. It was not ninety degrees, just like everything else, thermostats go bad. That room was probably seventy-nine degrees if the thermostat was working. It was, and he was teaching class, thirty kids in there. And I'm not going to say they were happy, but it was seventy-nine degrees, not ninety degrees. But this is the hottest room in the building. This is top floor southwest corner. We are a brick oven and with a skillet for a roof, got a tin roof right there. And so that corner has direct sunlight on two sides of it. And it's at the end of the run. So it receives the least volume of air. Eighty degrees. That was the highest temperature we saw in a classroom while kids were there today. I went back and while we were running buses, I kept pulling it up. I went back and while we were running buses, I kept pulling it up. We did hit 81 about 4 o'clock. Luckily, there are no kids in classrooms. And still, I just want to say, 81, not comfortable. It's not ideal, but it's not dangerous. The rooms around it, 75, 77, 76. This is what it looked like most of the day at the high school. There are some good zones. Red is not always bad. Red just means it's not as cold as the people in the room want it. So 74, 75, 77. We have cooler air in there. Some of you have your houses set at 75. Okay, we're cooler in most areas than that. I can't know. 76 is probably the average across, if we were to chart it out. Do you want to show this real quick, and then we'll just move past this? So top floor, 80, 79, 79. This 81, so there is an 81 here, and it's at the 142. It does go down as you go down the stairs. So the top floor is a little hotter. This is directly below it. Temperatures go down as, as we're going down. So we're watching this. We currently, as soon as school was out, we had two contractors on the roof, working along with our people to make sure that we get, are doing as much as we can with it. We are having, Mark's going to have someone come in at 4 o'clock in the morning, just to make sure everything is reset and everything's running well. Our goal is to keep this thing running until we can replace it. And we are, you know, the fan wall is going, we're using a lot of the same equipment, so we can start replacing pieces in place. And we're looking forward to trains work with that. Rest of the buildings across the district were great. Small things, couple belts broke off throughout the day. Had to replace a pump, had to replace a motor. We replaced an entire unit last Friday. And that's more like a residential, it's a three-ton unit, not very big. It's just one classroom with the junior high. But if you're in that classroom with the junior high, that's the most important unit in the building. So we replaced all of those, and they're, when I say we, I carry gauges, I give the guys water. I make sure they have the supplies they need, but that's all Mark Fott's team that's, that's doing all of that. Any question? This is the big one, I know. Anything on HVAC?
Another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just like you said, you took notes on what happened with the buses and stored away those notes so that you could improve on it later. I remember at different times in the past, you've told us the HVAC system hasn't worked since you first got, or not you.
Since 2003, yeah.
Yeah, since we first got it. So are we taking notes along about what's causing those problems, so we can avoid those in the future? Same with the plumbing that, the pipe that burst that was on an outside wall because it froze, you know? Are we taking notes on those kinds of things?
Yeah, so, so that's a great, so let's go back when I first came in. And that's, I appreciate this opportunity, because I really wanted to mention this, and I thought it was going to take up time, but you got, you gave me the segue. So when I first came on, there were two buildings that were just a problem. And when we sat down and looked at it, it's like, what, what are we, what, what are we doing wrong? And it's just changing filters, changing, the, the simplest thing of changing filters. Maintenance didn't have enough time to get around and change every filter. So we developed a plan where custodians would assist us in that. And by changing filters, we've gone from absolute mayhem, the first, as soon as teachers come back and chasing down all of the HVAC problems there, there are, to, I don't even want to say this, just, just wood, I guess, the middle school would constantly fail. We had one unit fail, and that is going, and, and that's already been, it was a motor, and it wasn't anything to do with that. So we are documenting that. We do better today than we did yesterday. And everything that we do. This system, I mean, it's running, okay? So that's the, years ago, this wouldn't run. It would, I mean, we would be cooling with two units. We're cooling with three units. Two of them are, are running perfect, running very, very, very well for what they are, and the other ones are running, and we're blowing cold air. So that's, yeah, we, we're constantly continuous improvement in everything that we do, and we're looking for that. So thank you for the opportunity to say that. So if you have a problem at home, change your filters.
Yes, it'll be a brand new one this summer. That's what they're saying.
Yeah. All right. So, construction, East Elementary, one of those things, as, as Ms. Tonsing just said, is we want to do better. But we, we've continually are replacing roofs, and East has been replaced. We, so when you look at it, the areas that we replaced are all of the shingles and the, the TPO area here. The TPO area, the white area right here. We completed the punch list on that earlier this week. Last week already, wasn't it? This week, this first two days have flown by, last week. And as you look at it, there's a few things they have to come back and, and fix up, but it's really a good project. We did that with Guarantee. They did the middle school roof with us. And if, they're, they are a great company as far as getting things done quickly. But more importantly, they are going to stick with us until it's done right. I'm not saying it's not right, but anytime you put a new roof on, especially with that many square shingles, there's going to be some flashing that leaks somewhere, and they're going to be back to make sure that it, it's taken care of. And they have proven that in the past. So West, or East Elementary has a new roof. We had some damage, water damage over time. It's nothing that, it wasn't a leak. It's when we were getting ready to refinish our gym floor at the junior high. The flooring people said, we're not going to do it. We can't do it. It's too moist. So we called our insurance company. They came out, they tested, and they said, yes, we will replace your floor for you. So while they had the floor out, we said, let's paint the trusses, because we don't want to paint trusses with a brand-new gym floor. So our gym has a new fresh coat of paint from the roof deck, and then they're painting the floor. Yesterday, they were supposed to be playing it. I didn't have it on there, and I did not make over there today, see if they have the lines on it yet. Mr. Link, Link? Okay, so they're close. We could have had this done faster if we chose a different size of wood, but Dr. Link and, and Dennis Fott worked together. We wanted to make sure we had a competition, professional, high school, junior high gym floor. So we're, we're about a week and a half behind to where we want to be, but they have been very patient at the junior high and worked with them, and we're looking forward to getting on to the floor.
Dr. Cheswick, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
What was causing that moisture? Is that, was that resolved? So there's no more moisture coming in on a brand-new?
So, yeah, so there, when they were installed, back in the 1960s, you put wood down on concrete, and then you put the gym floor on top of that. Over time, you just have moisture that works up through the concrete. So there's a moisture barrier that's in place to stop the moisture from wicking up from the concrete. Good question. Anything else? All right, middle school. So we have our team. We have Esterly Snyder and Branco here. We're going to have, each of them are going to have the time to talk. They are the ones leading this, but I get the opportunity to show the pretty pictures and talk about them. So they're doing the lion's share of the work, all of the work, and they're doing a great job. I'm going to steal their thunder and tell you they're a little bit ahead of time, but they're going to tell us how ahead of schedule they are on a couple, on at least one project in a minute. Middle school, we had some tight deadlines, and if you can't remember, we had to fill this area in. So that center section to set those pieces, we could not have anybody in those three wings. So as we look at those three wings, and how we could do that, our deadline was to get those set during the month of July. They actually were ready to go way before that, so we appreciate them. So if you can just scroll through those and show the timeline, the progression of it. This is about two and a half weeks of progress to set seven new classrooms, two bathrooms, and office space. And the final product, project, product, if you haven't driven by, is, is amazing. The roof, although probably not complete, I did notice today that you did have the final layers on and you were trimmed around. So there's, I'm sure there's a lot of work to do to finish it up, but all of the TPO is on. The inside work is beginning. The biggest thing that I want to say about Branco and their work is if you look between the storm shelter and the, the wing on the east side, we had to have that back to concrete, so that we had an entrance way into the building for meet-the-teacher night. Unfortunately, it started raining. Actually, I appreciate the, the grass in my field, my horses do as well, but that was unfortunate for that. They made it within 24 hours. They had enough time for the concrete to cure, and that is a much better entrance than we've had in the past. And it is a safe entrance for our kids to come in and our parents to come in while we continue to finish this project and prepare for the timeline of opening, which I will give over to Branco to talk about what the completion schedule of this project looks like.
So we're still on, on our target date for the middle school that we originally had. Sometime in January 2024, we should have the storm shelter at the middle school wrapped up and ready to hand over to the school district.
That's great.
That's exciting. I mean, that's, he, they are doing, that, that is an exciting date and exciting time. So we appreciate them. I do want to also point out that Esterly Snyder and Branco, as well as the school district, worked really hard to match that color. And if you drive by, it looks close now, but as time fades that, that, that you won't be able to tell where the old began and the, and the new is. So. All right, next we have Tiger Paw. Do you want to look at here? Storm shelter isn't supposed to be in, up yet. It's not scheduled to be up yet, but as we go through here, you can see the dirt work was done. The foundations were poured. One more, and the storm shelter is, this is an older picture. It is actually complete now. And they are working diligently. There were some time restraints here as well they had to work with. We would have had to shut down some wings while we set this in the fall. They were able to squeeze us in because of their relationships with the, with the precast. It's set. It's ready. The sewer is connected and rerouted. We've got some exciting news on the timeline on that as well. You can say it from there. You can stand up here and talk about your timeline on, on completion on that.
We're still looking at, we've got the precast set, like Curtis said, we had a, the precast company had an opportunity to set it earlier. We took advantage of that, because if not, we'd have had to close a bunch of the wings down in the school and coordinate that, and that was going to be a hassle. But we're still looking at around March of '24, getting that done, ready to turn over to the school as well.
That's before we begin. That's before the school year's out. We can have, and we're confident they can get that up a little bit more, as we move on. That date's going to, that date's going to be a little bit higher, but. Yeah. I, I'm just, yeah. So we're going to have breakfast and lunch cooked and served at Tiger Paw. Yeah. You don't know what that means for our staff, but more importantly, you don't know what that means for kids. So we're excited about that. High school, not as exciting. It's, there's, they've done all the dirt work. They've dug it up. They've flattened it out. They dug up more. And then they've put it back. So if you notice, they've, they've, the biggest concern we have, and it's an allowance, and we're going to change orders at the end. We're going to talk about allowances and, and we have an allowance for dirt work. The biggest thing we didn't know about was rock and where the rock was. So you don't know where the rock is until you move the dirt. So Branco and their preparation, they removed everything down to as far as we need to go. And then in preparation, they just filled it back in, which, so when we're ready to do the, the foundations and the, the footings, we know that all they got to do is dig it out, fill it back, and that's, and that's coming soon. So that's a big relief for me, but I'm sure it's as big a relief for them, knowing what's underneath that dirt. So we've got a little bit of rock to break up right next to the building. That's going to be a little disruption. We're going to try to make that as quiet as possible. But that, yes, that is a huge relief for our budget. We'll talk about that allowances. It, it's a huge. We, we budgeted a lot of money for that. And we didn't use very much. So that's an opportunity to work on this project and finish other projects. So, anything you want to add on this? Yeah, this, that's less exciting. Next summer. But hey, here, I got, and I'm honest, and, and they, and they, and they said it, I could twist arms, I'm, I'm, I'm driven. Everybody on this team is as driven as I am. They come in and do things before I'm ready to say, let's do them, which is pretty amazing. So I appreciate all of them. I do want Melissa to come up and talk about her perspective real quick from Esterly Snyder and how this is progressing.
Good evening. So this has been a great partnership. Branco is doing a great job of, you know, moving up schedules. We've worked real well together on finding things under the ground that we didn't know were there, of course, always happens. But everything's going very, very smooth. It's, it's progressing in a timeframe that's going to be great for the school. So things that we thought were going to take more, you know, several more months, we're moving those up. And I think you're going to see those all come together, you know, by end of next summer and be very proud.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for highlighting all of that in the timeline and the under-budget.
Right. And one thing I want to say, when I met with you guys, I believe Eric was there. Jacob is a, is a new full-time employee. He spent five years as an intern with us and wanted to go to work with us. So he's back, so we've got him full-time. The, this project is going exactly the way the CMR process was designed to go. There was forethought. There was planning between your entire team up front, and it's obvious by the schedule, by the working relationships with the architects, that everybody gets along most of the time, except for when he's twisting our arms. But it's, it's a process that should allow you guys to do much more than what you originally intended. And that's exactly what I told you when we started, and that's exactly the way we want to finish this project.
All right. So that's the, the construction portion, and I just want to go down real quick to right here. The last project we were finishing up this summer was, we had the flood. Third flood of the high school office. Third flood of the high school office. Dr. Brownfield came to me and said, he goes, you know, I'm really tired of losing tile. And this area of the high school, our commons area is called the commons for a reason. It's never shut down. The only time we shut it down is to prep it, to, to strip and wax it and do all of that. His idea and his, his thought was, what if we take it to, actually, the polished floors here and put a logo out there and made it look intimidating to our friends to the west? But reality is, is he felt he could be more productive, and his building could function as a 12-month building if we went with a non-maintainable floor. He was right. And we are finished with it. The logo went on last Friday. Dennis Fott, amazing human being, came in and put six coats of wax over the top of that tiger over the weekend. I, I told him he could pay somebody overtime, and he should pay somebody overtime, and he said, I want to make sure it's right. So not that his people wouldn't, but that's the attention to detail that our people take, and I just love it. So we are ready, and we're back in business at the high school. The millwork is there. There was a sink. I think the last sink is in. There's a little bit of trim to do around it. We're ready. We're ready for school. We have begun school. We're loving school. We're looking forward to this school year. And if you have any questions, I'll answer them. If not, can you make, leave that up, because the change orders portion is the second presentation.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Probably you've told me before and I just don't remember, but people ask me and I don't know the answer. Where are you putting the part, where, are you replacing the parking lot that we had to tear out for the activities? Is that, where is that parking lot going to be?
So that parking lot is, there will be portions of that parking lot that remain. The rest of it is going to be a storm, I mean, is going to be the, the multipurpose facility.
Oh, so you're not like moving somewhere else to become a parking lot?
We, we did purchase the land at the top of the hill that at some point, as, if we need more, we can add it there.
Oh, okay.
So just to, so where that's at, if you go just to the east on Bluff Drive, at the top of the hill there, we, we own that, and we can put parking there, and we could expand if we need to.
Okay. Am I wrong? Because I hear that there's not enough parking space. Is that not right?
So now that we're, now we're two locations.
Okay.
So, and they, and at the high school, they went away from, correct me if I'm wrong, but you went away from assigned parking, so it's just a pass, so that we, between the two locations, there's, there's plenty of parking.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Slide 37.
Yes, sir.
Last one.
Oh, yeah, it's part of the change orders.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's an anomaly.
We're, we're gonna talk about, that's why we have change orders. Yeah, we're gonna talk about that. So things that you find seven feet underground that you don't know are there. Yeah, so thank you for the segue, but that's later. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Chesick.
I believe I'm next, too. Yeah, but the email. So we've, so we've been asked for a few months to, we've talked through email to come up with a revision to our procedures. And remember, our procedures are not voted, voted on, policy, the board sets policies. You can direct us, and we encourage you to direct us and review our procedures with us. So the procedure that was asked to be reviewed, I would recommend this, this language. When it is determined that an email from a patron of the district becomes a material disruption to the district or becomes harassing in nature, the superintendent or school board president may direct the ISO Information Security Officer to block the sender or senders. In the event that a patron is intentionally blocked from sending emails to the district email address, the ISO or superintendent will notify the school board at the next closed session meeting. Chose two of those two terms very specifically because we're already required to do them. Tinker versus Des Moines Supreme Court case sets material disruption to education. That's a legally defined scenario. And it's not only defined in the Supreme Court case, it's defined over time of what it is and what it's not. So that's not something to be taken lightly. It's not something that we say, ah, it's a disruption, it has to be a material disruption. It has to impact the educational process in more than one space. Okay, if there's a space that it happens in, discipline can happen as a disruption, but if it happens beyond one specific space and it goes beyond a classroom and impacts more, a larger area, it becomes a material disruption. And then harassing, obviously harassing is a legal term that nobody would support harassing. So that's the language that we propose, that we use. Again, we don't generally, actually, we don't approve procedures, but we do encourage discussion. So I would ask if you have any feedback for this recommendation.
Thank you. Any feedback for Dr. Chesick?
I have some, of course. We've been talking about this for four months. In May, I brought it up because there was a problem, and we discussed what needed to happen, and we said, well, first, let's find out what the procedure is. So we waited, and then in June, there was a presentation about, I thought it was about the procedure, because that's what we had asked for, but I guess maybe it was just describing everything that goes into it. And then we talked about it that month meeting. We talked about what, how we wanted to maybe revise it or something. And we said, well, let's, let's be careful not to tie the board's hands if there's some threat to the computer system. We don't want to, you know, limit something. So we waited, we tabled it again. In July, we brought it up and talked about it again. And, and I had several concerns about what kind of requirements ought to be considered for censoring an email. And a couple of other board members mentioned, one person said specifically, I watched the videos to make sure I'm remembering correctly, I'm not just making this up. One person said, it should not be just one person who has the power to make that decision. Another board member, when we were voting to table it, announced to everybody, I just want to remind you, we want to be transparent, we're not gonna censor, we're not gonna filter or block any emails unless they're a threat to the computer system or to the board. And, and I had several concerns also, that it needed to be limited, that the sender needed to be notified, potential recipients need to be notified, and there needed to be a, an opportunity for appeal. So we talked a lot for three different months. We talked about the things that we thought should go into this procedure. And, and I'm surprised when I got the procedure, it, it doesn't really address any of the things we talked about. It has, one person can do it, the superintendent or the board president. It's not because it's a threat to the computer system, but just because it's harassing in nature. Now, again, we're not talking about emails that come to us individually, and I go to my inbox and choose block, I don't want to read that person's emails anymore. That's, everybody can do that. We're talking about emails not being allowed to be delivered district-wide to anybody in the whole district, including, fortunately, there's no cause for it now, but including, possibly in the future, an email appealing some decision of the superintendent could be blocked from reaching the board members. So all of the different things that we talked about going into the procedure didn't seem to go into it. Now, the board may let this pass, and, and I understand it's a small thing, we have budgets and buildings and all that stuff to worry about that are much more important. But I think it's just an illustration of a problem, maybe not just in our district, but in many districts that parents are starting to talk about and pay attention to, that's an upside-down method of governance. The Board of Education is elected to represent the taxpayers, and we direct the district, the administration, we direct what those things are. So we can certainly review and revise procedures, we can tell you what needs to be done, but it seems like when we talk about what we think needs to happen, and then this comes back, it's upside down. The administration said, the board doesn't review procedure.
No, I say, I'm sorry, I said, you review procedure, you don't vote on procedure.
You, you said that just fine now, but when it came to us in an email, that's not what it said.
Okay.
But the, I'm just saying, it's upside down. Like we said, here's what we want, and we got something that, that didn't take those things into account. And I don't want to cause a big stink about it. It can be fine if everybody wants to not revise this procedure anymore. It's fine, it's got the notification to the board on it. But it's, I just want to note, it's, it's upside down. It's supposed to be the board directs the administration, because the board is the taxpayers.
Can I, can I respond to that? I, I look at this as exact opposite. This says, so you, so you ask, so all the restrictions or anything else, we're not changing all of our security policies as far as what we filter coming in. That, that's the piece of the data, the security that we were talking about. This is, there's only two times, which we already have the authority to do, which is a material disruption to the school day. The example that I can use is that we had a student send an email. I gotta be careful. A student sent an email to all, all ads. It was very disturbing to our younger students. We blocked that because it created, it did, it, it created a material disruption to the day. That is what the Supreme Court says is the bar. So unless it's a material disruption or harassing, which, again, we have to, we, we all watch a lot of videos on harassing, so if, if that's the case, those are the only two times which we're already legally required to do, and that's very clear. So it removes all other opportunities from my perspective to do it.
With that, too, but the also, they're saying, what has changed in the procedure, which I see as a catch-all for everything else that you're concerned about, has to be presented to us within 30 days. And then we would get to intervene if we felt it was unjust and deal with that at that time. So there is that extra layer of protection in place that they're offering that doesn't, that would be anything.
Notification is a lot different than approval. We had, we had talked about it had to be approved by the board.
We have to be notified of it because we need to be able to vote on it.
Does it say we get to vote on it? Does it say it won't be there unless we? I'm, I'm not quibbling with the procedure. I know it's gonna
We could vote to overturn it or leave it, because anytime anything's presented to us, we have a right to vote on it.
It's just disappointing that we talked about it for so many months, and the, and the superintendent said last month, the acting superintendent, sorry, said last month, we will take this stuff that you've discussed, and we will put it into policy and bring it back to you. But it's not, it, it's, it may be good, but it's, it's not what we were talking about. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think you're, you're right, because one of the biggest concerns in the, when we were discussing it, was one person making the decision, and then we wanted it, you know, there's discussion on, do you just allow it to continue to happen until we have our next meeting and get to vote on it? And there are a lot that, that believed we should, the, the decision at the time, if something needs to be blocked, needs to be taken care of immediately if there, if there's a perceived reason, whatever that is, I, we can't get us all together to make a vote on a decision that is a material defect or harassing in nature. It's not going to happen. And so to provide that where we can, then it's presented to us. I think the problems in the past where it was not presented to the board, if we want to go back to what really caused a lot of the issues, no one was aware that some of those things happened, and we need to be aware of them and be able to make those decisions and not be the ones involved in the day-to-day decisions of to do it or not to do it.
Excuse me.
Writing that we have to be notified, so I appreciate that.
I also agree with both of you that the way this procedure reads does clarify and covers what we are, concerns from the last, previous several discussions. So I, I, I agree with what it says, and like it says, as Bo said, it comes to the school board, the school board can make that ultimate decision. If it's already blocked, and we say, no, we don't want it blocked, then, you know, open it up. But I think this procedure covers what we discuss.
So when they bring it to the board, do they bring someone to, who, the person who is blocked to have, to get your both perspectives, to hear two sides? I mean, there's so many questions, but I'm
To justify why they blocked it. So that is open to interpretation, which is why they bring it to the board.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Dr. Chesick.
Thank you.
And can't think of any more questions, although I did think of a question for Dr. Carson, but I may have to save it till after. So no more map testing. APR is gonna be local control. Yes. Teachers, do the teachers like this? The teachers are in favor. I would say that would be a relief. Yes. Questions hit me after the fact. Yes. Yeah. And next we have a superintendent's report and legislative issues. Dr. Wilson.
Have to remember to do this. First of all, I 100% agree with Dr. Carson and Dr. Chesick that the first two days of school, except for the heat, has been, they have been tremendous. Walking around, talking with the teachers, getting into the classrooms, you know, you would be amazed at what you have to teach kindergarteners the first day of school. So I'm in the cafeteria, and I'm just watching, and it is, okay, hold this this way, you put your hand here, you better do this. I mean, it's just, oh, God bless them. And also with preschool, you know, you just have to teach them everything. But the teachers are doing a phenomenal job. We've heard from numerous teachers that they really feel that this is one of the best starts to the school that they have seen in quite a long time. So that is a testament to all the preparation that our principals and our executive directors and everyone has done to make it a great first day. So it's done really well. I also want to thank you for participating in some of the meet and greets that, that you did. We, some of you had, were able to go to the meet the teacher night and to walk around and have conversations, and then also open car doors and greet people on the first day of school. And so that's awesome, and it is well-received, and people notice that, they really do. So thank you for all of that. Just one really quick thing, we'd had a question about teacher retirement, and I wanted to read this. We get legislative updates, and I think someone had asked if we were taking advantage of the changes that are being made. And basically, I just wanted to let you know that Ozark, as well as all other schools, have issues right now with hiring enough teachers. There are many schools in the area and in the state that could not fill positions, so we ask others for critical, it's called critical shortage. So that's bringing back a retired teacher to work. Well, they are limited in what they do because of, or working because of PSRS and their retirement. And in the past, they've only been, they've been limited to two years. And as you know, right now, we need them more than ever. So with the Senate Bill 75 and Senate Bill 20, it extends the number of years a retiree can return and work in a high-need area and still collect retirement from two years to four years, and increases the number of critical shortage employees a district may hire to the greater of 1% of the total number of district employees or five certified teachers. Now, this is just a paraphrase of the bill. So tomorrow, there's a webinar that we're going to watch to make sure that we know exactly how many teachers that we can use. It's, when I started reading the bill a little bit more, I then became a little more confused on, can you have five, or you can have 1% of your total population of teachers? So we're gonna go, we're gonna watch a webinar on that. But what is good about this is that it does give us more flexibility if we cannot find a teacher to cover a class. Yeah, so that, so that is a good thing. So that was my one thing right now on legislative updates.
And next we have our MSBA Action Center update, Patty Quisenberry.
Thank you, Sarah. I just wanted to give you an update. I recently attended the quarterly board meeting in Columbia, and we went over the budget from the 2223 school year. And while this was talking about, they're talking about the different programs that they do and the financials of it, this lady was walking around, Kim Ratcliffe, and she's the director of Medicare, and she handed me a card, she handed several board members' cards from their school district. And one thing that it showed was that we received revenue for school district administrative claiming of $194,105. So I know we talk about the different things about MSBA, what we do and what we don't do. You know, we talk about the, the policies, we have free legislative, if we can call, want to call in, not legislative, but legal advice, but this Medicare program is something else. It's a consortium, but to be able to recoup $194,000 is something. But while we were talking, she told me that there was also other things, you could receive up to $200,000 more if we filed the paperwork for cost settlement, direct services, and possibly local tax effort public placement fund. So I met with Lori to kind of go over this, and she called Laura Akins in, who is our Director of Special Services, and I want to give her a shout out. She is already doing an amazing job. She has already looked at those other opportunities for cost settlement and direct services. She's already actively pursuing that and, and arranging the type to fall, follow through with that. So there's an opportunity there for over $400,000 to $500,000. We will recover because we're in this program consortium with MSBA Medicare. Another thing I wanted to mention, the Region 10 meeting, I don't know if you've seen your email and followed that, but it will be here in Ozark on September 13th. And I hope all the board members plan to attend will be able to greet our guest. There are 38 school districts in Region 10, and we're not sure now how many are coming, but we will know that soon. The schedule is the registration at 5:30, networking at 6:00, 6:30 to 8:30 will be a dinner meeting. But since it's going to be here, held in the OIC, in this room right here, I talked to Dar, Dr. Carson about possibly coordinating to do tours prior to the event starting. So like from 5:00 to 5:30, we really wouldn't have to be done till 6:00, but he's gonna arrange that, he's already gonna set up a committee, and hopefully, we can even use our students here, that they will be greeters, they may walk through and give tours themselves. I think that would, we need to showcase this building. And for region schools to be attending here and to be able to do that, I think would be awesome. So I hope all of you plan to attend that. The next thing is the conference in Kansas City on November 2nd and 4th. I know a lot of you have already been registered. I'm so excited about that. We were told at this board meeting, if a school district registers, registers more than 10, there will be no extra charge to the district. So if we register 11, 12, 13, there's no extra charge. The student showcase, I've talked to Dr. Carson about that also, and hopefully, we're gonna have a showcase, student showcase again, because that is awesome. It will be held It will be held on Friday, which is during school time, so that with the teachers, hopefully that can all be arranged. And it's gonna be in the education expo, so they're gonna try to create a luncheon during that time so that all the board members that are attending the conference come through there to get their lunch. They'll see the expo, they'll see the student showcases. I want to apologize for this. I told you that Henry Winkler was going to be the keynote speaker. He canceled on us two weeks ago. He's coming out with a new book and it releases that Monday, so he's got to promote that. So I'm very upset about that. But they tried to help us find somebody else at this late a notice. So the keynote speaker on that Saturday night banquet will be Devon Henderson. I don't know who he is. He's a nationally-known comedian and magician, is what they say. I don't know who he is. But when you're trying to get somebody, I mean, we got Henry Winkler, that was a year ago. That was a year ago when we booked him. So at this late a notice, I would have bought his book, that's what we said. But they're gonna try to get him next year, but I don't know. Some of them didn't want to, they said, "Heck with him." Anyway, then this is another good news. MSBA has received $3 million grant from the State Appropriations through Governor Parsons to build a safety center for training purposes. I know I've talked about Frank DeAngelo's center in Columbine when that occurred. They now have a center that they do training for not just shooting or intruders, but it could be fire, it could be tornado, it could be anything. But they are going to build this center, it has to be within the city limits of Columbia. It will be, the facility can be used by any areas Missouri school, as long as you're an MSBA member, you don't have to pay to use the facility. But they can take SROs up there, whatever, to train in this building. Eventually, once it's all done and the Missouri schools get to use it, they will open it up where we can be a national center. And they expect it, they said the one in Columbia, I mean, in Colorado, is booked every day for out several years. So if we get to do that, that will put Missouri on the spot as far as being supporters for safety through our Center for Education Safety. So that's my update, so good news.
Thank you, Patty. Next, we have our assistant superintendent's reports and we've had a lot of those this evening. So one, your last chance to speak or questions for Dr. Carson or Dr. Chesick. Thank you so much for the construction updates and bringing Branco, thank you for being here, and Melissa too. And let's see here...
And that was the MSBA, where it says board report, that was the MSBA report.
Yes.
We just didn't put MSBA in front of it.
Okay, and you did legislative already, you talked about the bills and board report, so very good. So we're moving on to the future dates?
Town hall dates?
Yeah.
Okay, as we were looking at all of the dates, it is very difficult to find a date that there's not an event already as far as any type of sporting, band, any type of activities. So these were the four dates that we came up with. And there's not a vote, it's just if you wanted to have a discussion on this and then also if you wanted to have any type of discussion on how you want to run these town hall meetings.
Yes, so we thought it would be a good idea to have at least four town hall meetings this year. And these are going to be school board meetings that are dedicated only to answering questions and things like that. So we can, we've set our four dates and I believe they are, I don't have them in front of me, but they are. Patty's got them.
October 10th.
October 10th.
And December 7th.
December 7th, February 13th, and April the 22nd. And all of the board members may or may not be able to be at all of them, but we could discuss our format. We had Cindy Kinzer help moderate our last one we did at the high school. Oh, she did that, yes, she did. Oh, it was the chamber, yeah, Rachel, yeah. Well, Cindy would be, Cindy would be another option for moderating the town hall, she's good. So how would we like to do that?
Yeah. Will we decide a topic for each one or just like right now decide a topic for October and then see how things evolve and maybe decide, you know, way ahead of time so we know what the topic's going to be? It's not just gonna be an open forum, is it?
I think last time we had a town hall, we asked for questions ahead of time and you all chime in. And then we didn't have a specific topic last time.
Yeah, not a specific topic. I know we did have questions that come in. I do think that having them run through PTA could be a good, you know, Cindy's part of that. If that's, you know, I know before, I mean, that's just a thought.
I don't think we should limit it to it. I think, I always think we should let the people drive it.
Sure, yes, so they can bring questions and bring questions there.
Whatever, I mean, what's on them, I don't think we should set.
Sort of the same format as the Chamber Town Hall.
Well, I think they presented them beforehand, but then they also let people speak from the floor.
Okay.
We just had a time limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what it was. And the nice thing about the questions that came before, I think if there's any preparation that needed to be done, and it also allowed, I think, quicker questions than just the ones asked from the floor. And I was just sitting there, but when they would, when it was just people waiting to speak at the event, those questions ran out longer.
Yes, yeah, so about the same timeframe as that previous one and then...
I think you leave it open to where people could submit them.
Sure.
But we also, if people don't have time to do that, I think we should still have a time where we open it to the floor.
Yes.
But, I mean, obviously we have to have a time.
Yep, that sounds good. And as always, people can always email questions if they can't make it that night or call or whatever. But that, we will have no business meeting that night that will be devoted solely to town hall.
Will they all be held here at the OIC since it's more, you know, good facility for a large group? Or do we be moving them around?
We can have that discussion. I have not checked these dates to see if the OIC is open yet. But I can do that and then let you know. And we'll get it out in plenty of time so that people will know.
Any other discussion on that?
Can I ask a question about the last town hall? There were some, I remember that people emailed in questions and then the board, the district posted answers. I just wondered how, how will we do that? How did, how did the answers that got posted get arrived at? Like, how will we answer those? I know when we're just there, we're just talking back and forth, but the ones that people just send in that they don't have time to answer or whatever, how do we come up with those answers?
Should we answer those at the next meeting and then respond together?
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
That's what I would do. Because I don't think one person should be doing, I think we should handle them all together.
Yes, absolutely.
How'd they do it last time? Did they do that?
If I remember correctly, the, we wrote a skeleton of an answer from our perspective and then we sent all of that to the board members. The board members read over them, corrected or asked us, yeah, add to this. And so then they sent it back. So it was actually collaboratively written because we didn't have a chance to get to all of them. So the board, we gave like some, here's some talking points of this answer and then the board read it and did it. So that would have been we being mainly, it would have been the three of us and Dr. Baumann. And if we needed the people around us to give an idea, then they would as well. But it came from the board, they're the ones who, they're the ones who corrected it and added to it. We just started the process because it was no longer the meeting. So we were just trying to get some words down. Yep.
I, go ahead, I lost my train of thought.
We were talking about collaborative answers.
I would, okay, I would hope that we would get them all answered during the town hall. And if we can't, then I think we should answer them at the next board meeting together and then present that.
That's great, yeah.
Good, that's good, I like that idea.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, we'll move forward with approval of consent agenda.
Madam President, as always, I would like to pull a letter A, the minutes, and then let her in the job description because I think that deserves to have Dr. Wilson talk about that a little bit so the public can hear about that job description. I'm pulling that from the consent, I'm asking for that to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay, so should we move forward with approving the consent agenda, agenda, other than those two items? Okay. And do we have a motion?
In. Job description.
Motion by Patty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you. Okay, and Christina, we'll go back and discuss number...
Oh, I just asked to pull the minutes because I already talked to the board secretary about that, but there was something missing when there's a legally, it's legally required and board policy also says, when there's an objection or a no vote on going into closed session, that reason for that no vote is supposed to be recorded in the minutes. And so it wasn't there and I already talked to her today and I'm pretty sure, did you say you were gonna put it in there? Do I need to read it now or do you, didn't you say? Yeah, so, so since it, since it's, since that's not written on there, that's not accurate. And so I'm gonna vote against it.
We did not want to put, we wanted to have your words. We did not want to paraphrase that. So if you can give it, give us, give us that in writing, then we will add that and you can approve the minutes pending that this is in it.
Oh, that's a good idea, pending this.
Yeah, and we will get it in there. We just didn't want to use, we didn't want to put words in your mouth or to paraphrase.
I emailed it in, but maybe it was just overlooked or something.
Well, it was a long emails and we, we just, we didn't want to second guess or we just wanted to make sure we did it right.
Okay, so I said the, I kind of gave some reason, but I'll read it right now so y'all will know what we're pending approving. I explained what I talked about when we were voting no and then I said, "Here's the full reason which I stated." Colon, "I don't believe board norms was going to fit under closed session." Oh, I'm sorry, "I didn't believe board norms was going to fit under closed session during the previous meeting of June, so I questioned it in advance then. I noticed afterward that it did not. Despite questioning it in advance this month," this was back in July when I was talking, "despite questioning it in advance this month." "Explanation about why or how that topic satisfies any part of the very narrow..." As given it, and I was waving my book. So I'm voting against the use of closed. I think I used my battery more than others. Do you need me to read it again? Could you guys hear it? That was my reason for voting no, yeah.
And so you, she will email, can you email?
I did already. It's like three sentences or four sentences or something. Yeah, that's what's supposed to happen if there's a closed session vote, if somebody votes no, you're supposed to write, you're supposed to state your objection and they're supposed to record that in the minutes. And that is, in case there's ever a lawsuit, and there are lawsuits, speaking of liabilities, there are lawsuits against boards and they lose not just tens of thousands of dollars, but hundreds of thousands of dollars for going into closed session and talking about things that aren't supposed to be in there. So the law allows a person who votes no on it to have their objection stated in the minutes and recorded in the minutes as a legal defense against a lawsuit. I'm not arguing about whether they should have been or should have not have been. I'm just saying that was my reason for voting no.
So you, I'm just gonna double check, that entire paragraph, three or four sentences, even when you're saying you had it in parentheses what you were doing? That's what we were confused on because it has it in parentheses what you were doing at the time.
Waving my...
Right.
Then I said right after that, "Thank you for adding that to the minutes. Of course, you should leave out the bracketed part from the minutes. I just included it just now so as to hopefully bring to recollection more of my original statement."
Can you like just write, it's still for us, it's a little difficult. Just write exactly what you want in there and we'll get it in there.
Sure, okay.
We'll do that.
Thank you, all right. Go ahead, yeah.
But we could approve them with that added.
Yes.
Just pending that.
Yes, okay.
And I agree, anytime you have a no vote, you don't, you do not have to put in the minutes why you said that, but you can, absolutely. And if that is something that you want, then from now on, we need to have that in writing before you leave.
Very good, okay. And yeah, and get that to Erica before we leave, okay.
Just as a clarification though, we were advised as a board from our legal counsel that board norms was...
Yes.
Allowed to be put in.
Yes, it was, yes, it was.
Thank you. Okay, so are we going, moving on to, we need to approve the minutes from that session?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last session pending that addition.
Okay, thank you, motion by Christina.
I'll second it.
All right, second by Guy, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, passed unanimously, thank you. Next we are, that was sent.
I think she, I think the job description.
Oh, yes, number in, letter in.
I just wanted it to be publicly heard so you could tell a little bit about what that was.
Absolutely, Dr. Carson, you want to do that?
Sure, so part of the job description, we have the job description of Dean of Students. And what the Dean of Students will be is a teacher that's on a special assignment. And that teacher on a special assignment does have to have an administrative degree, although they are not going to be placed on the administrative scale. And as they are on that special assignment, they will, the reason they need to have their, the reason they need to have an administrative certificate is because they're gonna be dealing with some discipline and covering some routine discipline to take that off of the plate of our assistant principals. And the assistant, there's too much discipline in any school district for one person to do it. But they will help with that process so then the assistant principals can do what, one of their really important jobs is to be in classrooms and help coach teachers around instruction, assessment, and to do evaluations. Our principals, each including the assistants and the principal, they all take care of our teacher evaluation system. And each one of those, so we, to do a teacher evaluation system, it's about 10, we do 10-minute drop-ins and we do multiples of those a year based on our system that we use. And that system, each assistant principal and principal have around 120 to 130 drop-ins apiece. And it's hard to get that done if you are continually working on management issues in your office. So this job description takes, it gives, it's a lot like what an administrative job description would look like, but what you'll notice missing is there's no evaluation of other people and it's not putting anybody on administrative scale.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Carson.
Any more questions?
He looks at me. No, but I just wanted everybody to know about the new position and why it was made and how it's paid and all that stuff.
Good, thanks.
Okay, and so now we need a motion to approve in the new job description, Dean of Students.
Make a motion to approve the Dean of Students' job description.
Motion by Guy and second by Patty, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Ann passes unanimously.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carson. And thank you to our principals and thank you to Mr. Lighty, he'll be helping out with all of that. Next, we have new business.
Microphone was, oh, no, I've got this one, I'm just not gonna stand up there, so thank you. Change orders, I had a request or a conversation with a new board member about change orders and I was like, you know what, this is, they normally fall on consent agenda and they will fall on consent agenda going forward, unless they're additions to the contract. And that's the question, is what is a change order? Why don't we know all these things? And so when you go through the CMAR, C, Construction Manager at Risk process, they're on the hook and we're on the hook and then when you build anything, you know there's things that you don't know. We have a great architect and she and her team can design a great building, but that's being built in a vacuum without pre-existing conditions and other such things. So our current jobs, we have three change orders, two you approved last month and I just want to pull those up if you can go to that first slide and just to show you what we're talking about. So these are drainage lines from groundwater, surface water to drain out to our collection basin. And they're not where they were designed. So they were, we had a plan, according to the drawings, they said they were somewhere else. else than they are. Once they began digging, they determined where they actually were located, and we presented, or we brought on consent agenda last month, or actually in June, to approve moving those lines. And so that's been taken care of, and then the next one is just, it's just great, and I appreciate Mr. Jenkins for noticing, if you could scroll down to 37. Very few phone calls I have had have thrown me back, or text messages. Got a text message, found a cistern about seven feet below grade while digging at Tiger Paw. All right, okay, I'm from Iowa, I'm very well of what a cistern is, I've seen cisterns, it's, I don't know, this is the cistern of all cisterns. And how deep did you dig before you stopped digging? And it was still going out, it was still, so they weren't to the center of it. So we stopped, they stopped, they contact Estelle Snyder, and they contact engineers, and they contact the city, and everybody sits down, and the change request goes in, the change proposal goes in, it goes to architect, architect sends in the engineer, everything goes back and forth. This is unforeseen, both of these are unforeseen things that nobody would have known was there. It's like a real Oak Island, if you like, if you watch Oak Island, this is like, what is it doing here, is this the money pit? Who knows what this is? To finish digging it out was not the answer, to fix it was, that'll break over the top of it and cap it with concrete, that was approved by, city looked at those, the architects looked at the engineers, everybody said, hey, let's make this the way this goes. So, that was brought to the board meeting as well on consent agenda, neither one of those added to the contract. When you look at a change order, can you pull up the change order request, please? As you look at the first page, if you zoom in on that column on the right with all the numbers. So the top line is the original contract sum, and then the bottom number is the new contract sum, including the change order. And those both are the same number, because when we approve the CMAR, we approve two different, I mean, it's two different categories of money, one is contingency, which are, we didn't know there was a cistern buried here, or these lines are not where they're supposed to be. So, those are surprises to everybody, we want to make sure that we are planning ahead and that we know those are there, so we have a contingency to cover that. We have a contingency as a school district, Branco has a contingency as, hey, steel went up, and I need to make sure it's covered, or we didn't know this, and now we want to cover it. So, all of that is part of the original contract sum, and it doesn't go up. At the end, if we don't use all the contingency, we can choose to do those things that we did not include in the original contract, such as, the middle school has some bus, that we've done about half of the bus lane improvements, we need to finish out that, that's not part of this, but if we have money left over, that would be something we come back and say, hey, we saved this amount of money, we need to finish the driveway and the entrance and the end. We also have what's called allowances, and that's where we had, and we were talking about the rock, we had a huge allowance because we did not know how much rock was there. We know that when we built the high school, we had to do a lot of dynamiting, we know when we built the multipurpose facility, we did a lot of little bitty dynamite, because the high school was already there. We wanted to make sure we had that covered, so that's also in there, and that, again, that will actually come back to us to finish out those projects that we had to not, that we did not include in the original. So, every month, and over the past two years, we've brought the OIC, being a pre-existing building, there was a lot of them. We're six months in, are we six months in? And on four projects, and this is our third change order, so I'm really excited about where we're at. The current change order is a part of what we did last month. When we bid this, we did not have the ESCO in place, and we, in Branco's bidding processes, is we go with the lowest best offer, and that was Honeywell, is that correct? Johnson Controls, so, and so we switched over, and we're going to Train, so we switched it over to Train to match what everything else is going in, going into the district. Yes, with the ESCO, with Energy Savings Company, we're gonna have, like, I just showed you those, that's the EPM, that's gonna be brought together with Train and everything else. So just to match that, that's what this change proposal is, and again, we do these on consent, very seldom do we pull them off, if it's an add to the contract, we will do that, or if it's in excess of $100,000, we will bring it to you. Yes, so, and that's the, and if it's, so the board has given the district administration, so we can keep moving, the authority to execute these in less than $100,000, but if there's over $100,000, we have to wait till the next board meeting. But to keep things moving, as long as it doesn't add to the contract, we have had permission to execute it, give them permission to continue, obviously, we wouldn't have the storm shelter put in place at Tiger Paw had we not done that. So, that's the history of it and where we're at now, and my recommendation would be to approve this change order to John, from John Stone to Train Controls, or easier to say, approve middle school change order number one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Chesick, thank you for the explanation, and we appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order as presented.
Motion by Mark and second by Aaron, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Next, we have amend the 2022-23 budget to the audited actual revenue and expenses. Dr. Wilson?
Yes, this is another item-
Thank you, Branco, thank you, Melissa, thank you for being here. And anybody else who is sneaking out can sneak out, it's kind of boring stuff now.
We're down to the last two. This is another item that I do need your approval on, and what it does is it actually allows us to go forward with the actual audited numbers, it is, it keeps us in budgetary compliance, especially with the audit, because they will make, they want everything, you know, budget to equal actual, and then we will have to upload, and we already have, because it was due on August the 15th, we then upload our ASBR, which is our financial statements to the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education. So I ask that you amend the budget from the 22-23 audited numbers, and you make it, excuse me, amend it to the actual revenue and expenses.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion by Patty, second by Aaron, all in favor? And any opposed? One opposed, okay, Christina Tonzing opposed, everyone else is in favor, thank you. Moving on to approve the ASBR Annual Secretary Board Report.
Annual Secretary Board Report are basically our, our financial statements that have been submitted to DESI. This will change once again, I mean, it will change probably a couple of more times, and we will continue to upload. We do not have the 100% final numbers from the audit, and so they go back, they look, they contact us, and they say, okay, let's look at this number, and then we will send them more information, and then we will get the final audited numbers, probably in the next few weeks. But then there is something, and this is what's unique about school finance, is that we will find something, either we will get something from DESI that says, oh no, we changed a code, or we'll get something, especially in the special education world, that you find out after the fact, and you have to go back in and amend, or you have to change the 22-23 budget, and then, or, excuse me, financial statements, it's usually not by lot, but you do that, and then you have to re-upload the ASBR again. There, we will probably re-upload the ASBR four times by the time that the audit actually comes out in November, which is typical for every school. But what I'm asking you to do is to approve the one that is submitted to you, the 22-23 Annual Secretary Board Report.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Second it.
Motion by Mark, second by Guy, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Next, we just need a motion to adjourn the meeting, and we will return to closed session here or in the other room.
In the other room, please.
In the other room, yeah. Okay, motion by Patty, second by Aaron, all in favor? Oh, this is roll call, thank you.
Legal, legal.
And we are going into closed session due to legal issues, thank you.
Or actually, it's a legal issue that concerns students, so it could be either one of them.
Okay, all right, thank you. And we'll do a roll call. Here, I mean, yes.
Yep.
Yes. All right. Thank you, thank you all for attending the August School Board Meeting, see you next month.